Let's call the meeting to order. Uh, could you take one?
Mayor Gross.
Here.
Uh, Mayor Prozimutlich.
Here.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Stanifer.
He calls to let me know.
Alderman Cooper.
Here.
Okay. We do have a quorum present, so we will continue. Uh, we need to consider and act upon our consent items, which are the check written register and the minutes from last month's meeting. Y'all have a chance to look these over, or have any questions about those?
I don't.
I had a chance to look at them. I don't have any questions, and if no one else has any questions, I would like to make the motion that we can approve consent items number four and number five.
Oh, sir.
Okay, we have a second and a motion in a second. All in favor? Unanimously. Open forum, did anybody sign up? Speak for open forum.
No ma'am, they did not.
Nobody's here, okay. Okay, um, we have three new, uh, reserve police officers that we will be swearing in tonight. So if y'all want to come forward and get sworn in, we have, uh, James Kirkham. Would you like to come forward?
Who?
James Kirkham. We have Michael Green. We've got a couple of people swearing, y'all are going to watch it. This is Michael Green. And we have Stan Rice. And let's turn around and face.
And face me. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I. James. Michael Green.
James Kirkham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
A reserve peace officer.
Reserve peace officer.
Of the city of Coffee City.
Of the city of Coffee City.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect.
Preserve, protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And the ordinances of this city.
And the ordinances of the city.
And I further more solemnly swear.
And I further more solemnly swear.
That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly.
Or indirectly.
Paid, offered.
Paid, offered.
Or promised to pay.
Or promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Nor promised to contribute.
No promise to contribute.
Any money.
Any money.
Or valuable thing.
Or valuable thing.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
As a reward.
As a reward.
To secure my appointment.
To secure my appointment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I would like to add that, um, Officer Kirkham is actually our part-time employee, and the other two will be, uh, on a reserve status as officers.
Yep.
Okay, uh, we need to consider and act upon a maintenance contract agreement with Kohl Air Conditioning, uh, for this building. We have one for the community center.
We did? No.
Oh, I guess I'm thinking, um, the septic, sorry, air conditioning. Um, do they want to, are we still under warranty on that other one?
No, and I have not got a problem with those. I'm gonna get this one out of the way. Can I, can I speak to this real quick?
Sure.
Okay, we've had problems with this one leaking, this unit in here leaking. The guy came out, and evidently these haven't been maintained in a while. Uh, there was gunk and mold that was in the pan and the drain pan on the evaporators that he said looked like it hadn't been cleaned in ten years. Since we had it cleaned, we've had more instances of leaking, and that was in the other one that we didn't get cleaned. Um, I really think this is for two hundred and eighty, whatever it is, dollars. If we're gonna, you know, I think that's a good deal for the city to get those maintained, because if we don't, they're gonna end up burning out the costs for a lot more money.
And they're come out twice a year to?
They'll come out twice a year to do a routine check, maintenance, all this other kind of stuff. Uh, if we call them, if we have an emergency, it goes down or something, they will not show just overtime fees or anything like that. If we call them out on Saturday, you know, it's a flat fee if we've got a contract with it. Uh, there's, I believe, a reduced price, ten percent off service bills, so if they have to replace something, you know, ten percent off of that. And then, uh, I think there's a reduced price also for, uh, the free on and stuff like that that they might have to have. I didn't, that's not only both, but that's what I.
Looking at the bill, they only charge us ninety-nine dollars to come out. I personally know Kohl Air Conditioning from years in the business. They're out of Athens, they're very well-known, they've been there for years. They're one of the few contractors that charge on the basis of what they do, uh, not on the basis of what was wrong with the air conditioning unit. I'll give you an example. We had a unit down here last year, and contractor we had been using, won't say their name, came out and they charged what they called a flat rate. We had a capacitor out there. The capacitor was gonna be three hundred and something dollars. I happened to drive up at about that time, and the fire chief was out there talking to him, and I didn't see the contractor standing on his side of his truck. Uh, the fire chief said something to me, and I said, "Ain't no way." I went and bought a contactor and a capacitor for seventeen dollars. It's four wires to change. You know, it's not a big deal. So, those kind of guys, we need to try to stay away from. I highly recommend we don't, that these, that we do this. Then we look at the.
Well, I think the day that I was up here, we were working on carpeting, and carpet had been put in, and then we had a little leak, and it was like, I think it was Phil's suggestion that we call Kohl. And so then they offered us this.
When that happened, I called them at, say, eleven o'clock in the morning, at one o'clock, the guy was out there fixing it.
I think for the money amount, it's very reasonable. And I would also say that in our repair and maintenance budget amount, because we did come under a little bit on our, the carpeting section, I think it's within our budget to do it, so.
Yeah.
This year's budget.
Well, the other thing, they changed the filters, they knew that kind of maintenance, which.
Twice a year.
Twice a year, yeah.
I think that Phil's recommendation, I couldn't see any higher one than that, because I've never started to agree with Phil on anything air conditioning, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept this contract.
Oh, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries, and Doug, will you just contact them then and let them know?
Yes ma'am.
And go with them? Okay. Number eleven, we need to discuss and act upon the two part-time positions for the police department. I, I'm sorry, I should've given that better wording, but in a hurry. Uh, we have hired, uh, Jim Kirkham as a replacement for John Shefty, the part-time position. And, um, he has proved to be a very good, good employee, uh, much more experienced than we knew. Um, he's great on computers. Uh, we might be able to ask him a few questions here in a little bit, but what I wanted to propose is, um, also after talking with the police chief, um, we had budgeted, uh, for another part-time position in addition to this one, in the budget for this year, but after getting a new police chief, working with the reserves that we have and what he wants to build up and working on the different schedules, he feels that we do not necessarily need another part-time person. So we do have that money available, and Mr. Kirkham has, um, asked to go full-time, but with no benefits, none of the health or vision benefits. Uh, he would still get vacation and sick time benefits, of course, but, uh, the, the health benefits amount to about nine thousand seven hundred dollars a year. And so, I was going to try to, uh, his, what we're paying him currently, I believe, was eighteen, two fifty-two, and like to make him full-time and pay him thirty-eight, two fifty-two. Uh, and I think that would bring him in line with the other.
Have you checked with T M L about the no benefits situation?
Yes, I actually had Doug check with them, and then I called them back even after that. They sent us a, uh, there is a form that he would need to fill out, apparently, and I don't know where this comes from, but he must have, we have to show that he does have insurance.
They're giving a form, letting wave off the coverage for something. He has to say what reason he's waving off, so they can keep it in your files.
Yes, and there's a bunch of little boxes that he could check, which one it is, you know, if he has other insurances through spouses, employment, or whatever the case may be. So as long as he fills out that form, and, uh, then he can deny the benefits, and T M L is okay with it. Um, I think one of the things, one of the questions being asked was, um, to not have overlapping coverage of our full-time officers. Is that something you might wanna address as to when you might have him working and how you wanna utilize him?
For counsel, we have two shifts as far as, uh, Corporal Clark and I, which is the first and second shift. Uh, Officer Kirkham would be taking the night shift, which would put him out for the rest of the whole week that we got coverage. And then the officers that we have coming in on the weekend, we occupy the weekends. The only time we would have overlapping is if he's needed for occasions like this where we're here, or court, or that we have to work on a case that, uh, requires two people. Uh, we also have reserves, or I should have a reserve coming up that can assist us, so we can have two main units, we don't have to use, uh, one of the pain officers to be on the same shift. As far as that goes, we shouldn't be together any time other than maybe one time to take care of some paperwork, and he has a leg up on the system that we have here, which is called B-Force, which I'm not familiar, never heard of it, and I'm still trying to catch up on that program, but it seems like every day I get on it, and I'm still, you know, behind. And, um, Corporal Clark has been familiar with that, but there's also things that she wasn't showing when she was here, and, um, Kirkham's been kind enough to show us other things that we had no idea existed, that without us in our evidence room and everything, that we didn't even know was on there. So until he gets his acumen to that, we could use him a few hours, overlap a couple hours, just to get us, so that we can understand that system. Other than that, he's in his own shift.
I, oh, my bad, so sorry.
Five dollars.
I'd like to take that, but, um, anyway, sorry.
So what we do is we need a motion for one full-time officer instead of the two-part-time? They understand it correctly?
Um, yeah, that's where we, we're going with that, and, uh, yes, we would get rid of the two part-time positions that we budgeted for and make it one full-time without medical benefits.
So there'd be three full-timers?
Yeah.
Uh, how late do you have coverage out here during the week?
Nine. One A.M.
One A.M.
And, um, sometimes, well, it doesn't go one A.M. every week, like for instance, tonight the council, she'll go home early, 'cause she gotta have to get here early, which, uh, not necessarily.
I just wondered how late you stay, uh, I was around ten o'clock, I'm fine.
What time is, what time is your store closed?
Nine.
Nine.
What time is the dollar store closed, ten?
The ten. It's the night ten.
Ten.
Ten, so I'd say seven o'clock at night, and roll up the streets, bro.
Well, that's where the business is, but, you know, citizens still need a little patrolling, and the traffic out there is crazy, and.
I have worked at nights, but come out here several times, and there's, there's still traffic, and there's still, uh, stuff going on coming out of the Briarwood Way, which we believe there's, uh, traffic runners, which we get about here one fifty-five, but we've had some success taking them down.
Traffic brothers?
Uh, bringing dope in.
Oh, okay.
Um, 'cause I got someone with four grams, and he's known to be bringing it in here, so it's just, uh, he's a gem.
Uh, if I should say this out loud, but they've done really a terrific job on bringing down several people out of the area, neighbor, neighboring areas, and, um, doing fantastic jobs with that, so.
Well, I'd like to make a motion, as we're just gonna cut to the chase, of hiring one full-time officer instead of two?
I will say that.
Okay, then we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Carries unanimously. I'd like to add that I did talk to Riley, he called me yesterday, was not gonna be here tonight, and he thought it was a great idea. He thought the more full-time we could have, even the better, so that was his comment on it, but.
More hours we're charging, the better.
All right, well, congratulations.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll get with Doug tomorrow, whenever, next time you're here, whenever. Get you set up. Okay, thank you. Okay, mayor's report. Uh, I was just gonna say, it's kinda been busy, uh, this last month. I've decided we're gonna have a staff meeting with all the employees every other month. We had one in the September, first part of October, and, uh, with different departments, had new people coming in, whatever, I think it's helpful. Used to have them in the past, I kinda got away from it there, just a year and a half, and, um, so anyway, we've kinda set that up and, uh, found that it was very helpful, and we are going to do it, like I say, every other month, kinda have maybe a lunch up here and meeting all, and closed at the same time, just so we can work out any problems that we have or needs that are not being met or whatever. Um, also, would like to just report that, uh, the police chief and I attended a, um, graduation at the police academy for a, uh, woman that apparently Scott Metcalf had sponsored this, through the city to go to. Her name was Teresa, and I.
Lewis.
Lewis, I'm, thank you. Teresa Lewis, and so it was nice to go and see that. Um, Riley commented to me about the sign, he said the sign out at the E D C, uh, at the building, uh, on the highway, thinks it's great, loves it, he just wanted me to, I said, "I'll pass your comment on."
He's a smart man.
Okay. Um, the audit and budget review, um, I like to do the budget quarterly, but, uh, I'm gonna do it next month, we'll have four months into it or whatever, but, um, anyway, we'll get the budget covered on the next agenda. And on the audit, I, I was hoping we would've had it, uh, this evening, but, um, talking with our auditor, Morgan LaGrom, she's run into different issues with the schools and stuff that she also audits. She says ours is perfect, and she's about to wrap it up, and is promising me we'll have it at November's council meeting, and she'll schedule an exit meeting for the council before, you know, well, with Doug and me and one other member. And then also, I'd say the, the employees have been very busy. We've installed a new court system, Net Data, that has kept LaRena and Doug and Shaw, you know, the judge, all very busy, but I'll let Judge, you'll speak to that when you, when you can do your report. Okay, that's all I had. Uh, you wanna give the E D C report, please?
Yes. We started out the month with a hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-three cents. We paid the E D C secretary three hundred and fifty. Lawn mowing was a total of twice, two hundred and twenty dollars. The Lake Palestine, the water came to a hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-seven cents. We brought in H and R block rent for nine hundred. Sales tax was four thousand two hundred thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Bank miles was thirteen dollars and eight cents. And I'd like to report that, number three and four, Pizza Pro paid June, July, August, September, October, November, December, January, for a total of seven thousand two hundred dollars. Also, he paid the electric, uh, in the total of nine hundred ninety-four dollars, so we brought in nine, eight thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars from our renter.
Did it appear you said he's paid through January?
Yes, sir. He pays through January twenty nineteen.
I think we're gonna get us a pizza business.
Okay. Give you a wonder, but yeah, that's great.
That was not in there. Okay, um, any questions? Okay, our hotel occupancy account, Mottern brought in nine hundred thirty-one dollars and twelve cents. The resort brought in seven hundred twenty-one dollars and eight cents, for a total of one thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and twenty cents. We paid the sign, the electric, uh, for ninety-one dollars. We paid the sign master, um, Chris, two hundred dollars. Our Branson citizen ads were three hundred and twenty dollars. Sign master for the community center is the final deal. It was four thousand five hundred dollars, and we paid webmaster two hundred dollars. We now have a total of forty thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and fifty-three cents in the hot account. And I'd like to let you know that I fought, uh, went ahead in the T M L Economic Development Conference, and it's November fifteenth and sixteenth. I did get even to his ninety-nine percent full, but I did not get the hotel, I have to go down the road about eleven miles. So that's November fifteenth and sixteenth.
Where's that?
Lost Pines or Bassrup. And, okay, so I'm.
Um, since we're on the E D C report, could I ask, y'all had an E D C meeting, and I, did y'all, you had a couple of people that spoke on business boards or something? Is that something?
Oh, well, very exciting, uh, we, we actually have things that are happening, and, uh, I don't know who to give credit for, uh, not to surprise anybody, but I have nothing but good things to say. We, uh, the sign has worked out really good, we've had, uh, we've had quite a few businesses actually asked. Uh, it's like Coffee City didn't exist before we got that sign. We've had a lot of people, uh, asking about businesses, we have people who are actively looking for locations, and I've been talking to them about the real estate opportunities. Uh, the community center sign has gone real well, and they always talk about towns and bringing a sense of community. This, it's gonna do a real fine thing at the community center, because it advertises the local events that are going there, the family reunions, the, the church that's ringing the place.
Yeah, I know those people today.
And it's, it's, it's done a real fine job of advertising, and, uh, out on the main road, the big sign, its versatility is gonna be fantastic. It's actually bringing the business, uh, community together, because we're now having the communications with businesses that we never had before. And it's also brought a lot of interest from the traveling public, they actually see it and go, "Well, something must be going on."
Yeah.
And so I think this money just really well-spent, and I, I expect nothing but good things. The only problem that we're having is actually fitting the interested businesses in the proper locations, because it's all a matter, they are businesses, they do want real estate, it has to fit in their particular plan.
Right.
And so that's where we're trying to bring it together, so it's, uh.
Uh, did, did, uh, the Pizza Pro guy, Anthony?
Oh, uh, yeah, Anthony, uh, Anthony, he, uh, he didn't, uh, he didn't show up for the meeting, but he did pay his, uh, he paid all his bill and paid into the advance for Pizza Pro, and.
I didn't know if he spoke about his, about his business.
Well, we had, uh, one of the two on the E D C meeting we had scheduled, we had the, uh, Lake Palestine motels, the new RV park is coming in there. Yeah. And we had, uh, Brian, uh, Brian came in, who's the manager over there, and he talked with us about that, and he said they were gonna have a twenty-eight spot, uh, slot there, and they were rebuilding their dock, and, uh, Mr. Singh, understanding it's out of the country for a, a couple of weeks, but they're about to get in high gear and getting that together. And so, uh, we, he spoke about that, and, uh, Pizza Pro was there, and we were hoping to get an open date for him also. And, uh, according to Ryan, he's gonna get in high gear here, and nothing ever happens on a schedule, and that's one thing I've learned about business from all years I've been involved, is if they say something's gonna happen, add a few months on it, and that's where it happens.
Yeah.
But according to the latest that I was told is, is the RV park should be up and running within two months. We will see if that happens. And the same thing with the Pizza Park, uh, Pizza Pro. Is there any sales tax on that RV park?
Where the restaurant used to be?
Yeah.
Yes, they, they've torn up a lot of the concrete in there, and that's, uh.
What was it going on?
Well, they bought that bit a lot, they, they owned the boat ramp, and they owned the hotel, and now they bought the land in between.
Well, they better do something about that boat ramp.
They already, they already tore it out, put a new one in.
Oh, but that last time, we used.
It's, they were the perfect purchasers for that property, because now they own it all the way from the hotel, all the way down to the water. And so they were, they were the natural people to buy that property, because they can develop it, and it's waterfront. The thing that makes any business successful around here is waterfront. So now they got all this property, this waterfront, and I spoke with, uh, Tony, Mr. Singh, the owner, about his long-term plans, I had meeting with him at his hotel, and with Brian, and they spoke of, he's gonna do it kind of a staged affair, but his staged affair is basically put in his RV spots, uh, he's gonna have Wi-Fi for all of the gear, he's gonna put in a dock there, and then he's gonna go on from there, and.
And can that dock still be used by the public? I mean, I, I know they pay for it, but I mean, is that still gonna be open to?
No, it's, it's never been public, of course, it's always been, uh, you pay for your boat launch.
Which, yes, true.
But, uh, it's gonna be the same ass.
Same, okay.
It's the same ass. Anyway, uh, that, that's all, and there's, the Pizza Pro is gonna be a perfect fit-in with that, because they're not gonna be serving food there, and so you have the Pizza Pro right next to it. And, and what I'm hoping is kind of a domino effect with all of this, because we're gonna have a, uh, we're gonna have our active new restaurant right there, the strip center will be full, we're gonna have that RV spot open, it's gonna make the corner a lot more attractive, and, like I said, we've had people that are wanting other properties, I've had people who actually wanna start building tomorrow, if they can find, find a spot, and so I've been actively speaking with everyone up and down the vein, and trying, trying to meet them up with that spot, 'cause we, uh, we're, we're ready to go.
Okay.
And I wanna give credit to, uh, I wanna give credit to all of us, you know, I think we've all worked real hard on it, and I think, uh, I think we should've pushed harder on the, uh, Lake Palestine Center a long time ago with advertising and effectively utilizing that spot.
I do, I will say for Don's benefit, that I think Don wanted that sign, um, two, three years ago.
Years ago.
And was kinda bought to the mill to get it, but now it's, it's the area.
One other question. What are they doing with septic? Uh, they've already got a, a plan approved, they went up to, uh, with the Upper Nations River Authority, they've already submitted their plan, and it's already been approved. And when we were looking at the plot, I was at the hotel, and I said, "Well, I'm gonna see the plans." Well, he had the plans on the, they had reinstalled the septic system for the hotel, because at one time the hotel was having issues. Yeah. Well, I got to see the system that they'd installed for the hotel, and it was pretty neat. They had the drawing, and it's also approved by the Upper Nations River Authority. But to answer your question, Phil, I don't know the fine details, but I know it has already been drafted and approved. They've, they've got a plan, that's the main. It's all been approved, because unless, unless the Upper Nations River Authority approves something, it's not gonna happen.
All right.
And they said it's already been approved, and it's ready to go. And I actually wanted him to throw down the, the plan on the, on the table so we could look at it, we were not green at that opportunity.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, I appreciate the update on that, that's great. Anybody have any questions for E D C report?
Nope.
Okay, uh, Judge, could we have the court report, please?
Okay. We had three hundred and seventy-three new cases filed in the month of September. Thirty were dismissed after the driver's safety course completion. Fourteen after a declared disposition, six after insurance, proof of insurance. Um, we only had seven, seven warrants that were issued, um, that was due to the training going on with the court software. Uh, we had one K P S profile issued. We had six cases that were dismissed after jail credit. Three were waived after an indigency hearing. Uh, indigency funds and court costs waived were one thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. We had a total, um, amount collected on citations, twenty-one thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars. Uh, we had in-house warrant collections, two thousand two hundred dollars. There were seven warrants that were cleared. We have quarter taxes that have been paid, that was twenty-one thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. The quarter transfer is gonna be sixteen thousand four hundred and three. And just to touch on what the mayor said, with our new court software, we're completely on board. Um, they are taking over our past dues, uh, the guys issue a citation, they have a due Guys issue a citation, they have a due date. In the past, their due date would come and go and you can't always be right on top of it to where you get their past due notice out within a week. So Net Data has agreed to take those on and once they miss their court date at fourteen days, they send notices out. It's their postage, it's a little postcard, it can say whatever we want it, it's perfect. It usually prompts everybody to go ahead and pay their tickets. The collection agency came on board overnight on the third and they're actively collecting. We've already had several phone calls. I can't speak highly enough, I want to thank y'all so much for approving the new software. It does payment plans. We push a button, how much do we want down, and it prints the payment plan. The individuals can go online, they can call the X seven seven number, they can go online and look at their payment plan, they can see their docket number, everything. So that's going to alleviate hopefully some of the frivolous phone calls that we get because they need information that they have that they don't look at.
So I said they will.
Raina told me that they had cut her time in half and I totally agree.
That's going to free her up. Right now, you guys, all she's able to do right now, I mean, she's fielding all the phone calls, she's very protective of the judge, and she does what I've never had, you know. Where else can you go walk up to a window in Texas and pay your fine and you're talking to the judge? Well, then they want to tell you about it and you can't. You know, then they want to argue about officers doing their fine job. We really don't have any complaints on the officers. But it's going to free her up to where she's not just entering the tickets and doing the dismissals on the driver's safety. She's going to be doing actual clerk work. She's going to be helping, there, there's so many things that she is allowed to do and it's, it's just going to be, I'd love to have her full-time, but she's got things going right now. Maybe one day, but there, there's plenty of work and we've got half a million dollars in outstanding warrants that they now have their hands on and they're actively.
Hopefully, zero revenue from that in the next few months.
Absolutely, yep. So that G H S number is going to go up. I think it's going to make up.
What does that G H S stand for?
Oh, you were going to ask me that.
Sorry, did I touch on?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'll find out for you.
We'll figure it out, we'll get it for next time.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anybody have any questions for the judge?
No.
Okay, can we have the police report, please?
Good evening, counsel. For the month of September two thousand eighteen, the Coffee City Police Department had seven calls of service, thirty-five officer-initiated activities. They had one accident, eight agency assists, one civil matter, one criminal trespass, three loose livestock, four murders to assist, two public intoxication, two suspicious person, two, four suspicious vehicles. We had a total of nine arrests last month and a total of seven call-outs. We had a hundred and six speeding citations, one defective equipment, nine no driver's license, three expired motor vehicle registration, eight driving without license invalid, one failure to change address, sixteen no insurance tickets, disregard stop sign one, driving down the turn lane one, no front plates, four failed to signal turn, three, two public intoxication, no L P light one, one open container, three no seat belts, two failure for emergency vehicles, and then our warnings. We had a hundred and sixty-two citations, thirty-three issued warnings, which was a total of a hundred and ninety-five contacts. Coffee City Police Department at this time had two full-time officers, eight reserve officers, and three recruits. All officers completed their hours of service for last month. Any questions?
Any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it. If you have any questions, I'll call you. Thank you, counsel.
Very high.
Our fire chief is not here tonight, but Doug is going to give the fire report, please.
There were nineteen calls for service, one building fire, three grass fires, eight medicals, three, three tree obstructions, one boat call, one good intent, one motor vehicle accident, one burn ban violation, or warning rather. Currently have seventeen senior firefighters that was last month. Upcoming events, National Night Out went off well. I don't know, I think Frank attended and Deborah attended, but we had a very good time down in Frankston. Got recognized again, and I think Frank also got recognized, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So there, there, other cities are seeing this and recognizing what we do for them as well.
I understand Judge went as well and some of the other.
Yes.
Several people attended, I couldn't make it that night, but it's glad everybody went.
I'm not even going to attempt to pronounce this first. Fire School, Northeast Texas Firefighters, Fire Marshals Association, Fire School is the sixth and the ninth of October. Henderson County Fire School is the twentieth of October, Square Fair is the twentieth of October, City Cleanup is the twentieth of October, and I think there's something else that he left out, but I don't know. November tenth is our pancake for veterans. So basically it's from eight to twelve, we're going to have the pancake, sausage, coffee, orange juice, tea, water. Bounty houses will be available for the kids and we're asking for donations, veterans eat free. Holiday meal is the eighth at six, it'll be a potluck. And we'll get started for, get more information on that in October, which one, who's bringing what and everything. If you have any questions, contact Chris Moore.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have questions for the fire department report? On the cleanup day, October twentieth, what time will the?
They'll be here at nine, if I'm not mistaken. They will leave when they.
Are full.
Are full.
So they'll be gone by nine fifteen.
No, the problem, we had, last year they brought in four containers for us.
Early in the spring, we had one in the spring.
Brought it, yeah, in the spring, that's what, last time.
So they brought it in October, Friday.
They brought in five containers for us, they dumped, they brought in two new ones, a total of seven containers. This year, they're not going to do that. They're going to do it until the four or five containers that they bring are full. And then they will haul them up and they fill them up.
Important note, too, we do not pay them any extra for that service.
That is a service that they offer free. I don't know if they're going to set up the hot dogs this time.
Yeah.
Are they? But that's always a big draw, too. Eat, eat, dump your trash.
Don't they normally set them here though on Friday afternoon?
Sometimes.
I think they've decided to start it on Saturday simply because.
And then we fill up.
That's exactly right, and that's why they're going to be down at the community center or in the back of the new park in like one of the two places, simply because we had so many problems of people outside of Coffee City, contractors and stuff, bringing crap, junk, and putting it in our trash can.
And we will have someone from the police department to kind of be on side to keep eyes on these.
Show me your ID that says, you're in Coffee City.
Also, one thing also to bring up is elections are coming up on the sixth.
Everybody vote.
Are they doing next week?
Yes.
The elections, yes.
But early voting starts what, the twentieth?
Don't give me a lie, Phil.
Wait until we say.
It starts soon, but we don't have it here, we'll have it at Chandler.
Chandler, Seven Whores.
Or at Athens or at Seven Whores.
Is information on our website?
Information for the voting is on our website, the only information that is not is the new stuff from the court because I got it this morning.
So at the next meeting, which is on the twelfth, we're voting on the sixth.
Right.
Will we be verifying the vote count?
You know, you have to give the county so much time, so many days to give us results to show us, you have to canvas the votes, so it.
Probably not.
Probably, I want to say probably not, but it's, could be, so just have to kind of wait and see what.
Yeah, because they have still do their audit of votes and it usually takes them, from what I understand, it takes them about three to five days to give the stamp's approval.
Well, if that's the case, we would have it for them. Actually, it's a Tuesday night meeting again next month.
Right.
So just get somebody in that seat as quick as possible.
Yeah, the election's on the sixth and our meeting is on the thirteenth, so we'll just have to see what, what the county does.
Okay, it's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
But they're going to vote on the twelfth, so.
Right, we're closed on the twelfth and I'm sure the county is.
Yeah, the county's closed on the twelfth.
That's by Wednesday, I'm sure, so, okay. Can I get a motion to?
There's no number on the ticket, though.
Okay, I'll put you.
Motion is there.
I'll take it.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Okay, who's the motion, who's the second?
Motion.
Here it is on.
Motion carries, did y'all hold on that?